We are already, DNI in the eight ball.
I'm calling the work session to order. We do, but we don't have our board clerk because she's running around like a chicken with her head cut off right now. If you could pause just for a brief second and call to roll.
Good afternoon. Melissa Mason.
Here.
Josie Barnhart. Pat Bradford. Judy Justice. Dr. Tim Merrick.
Present.
David Perry. And Pete Wildebohr.
Also present.
Thank you. We are going to have our invocation and I'm going to ask Mr. Wildebohr to leave the pledge today after the invocation. So we're going to have the invocation and the pledge.
This invocation is to call on God to help the board in their assisted living of all the relationships they have to coordinate. So, Lord, I thank you that in the book of Ephesians, chapter one, verse 17, it says that we could ask God for the Spirit of wisdom and revelation. It also says in Ephesians three, in verse 20, that he will do exceedingly and abundantly above all we'd ever ask or think. So, Lord, I ask for special revelation and abundance for the board, for wisdom, Lord, for unity, for purpose. Lord, that the purpose that they have, the call upon their life, the call upon their responsibility. So I ask for unity and purpose and the fulfillment that you have for all of that which is before them. And I want to thank you, Lord, now, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes six to zero. So the purpose of today is to discuss the recommendations from the Finance, Bond and Capital Committee that were just made. Literally just. And then to ask, to see a presentation of all the school facilities that we're thinking about, talking about. And then you can kind of see all of the remaining things. So this is our opportunity today to ask all the questions, to get all the information. Our final decision will be, we will be voting on this at the very first meeting, our October regular meeting. So this gives us that time to be able to get everything answered, to hear from the community, and then to make our decision determining what our priorities are. So as far as moving forward, now we have the recommendations from Finance, Bond and Capital. And I'm going to hand that over to the chair of that committee.
And I don't know if in today's packet you have this step five, item five, sample of project cost. But it is in the Finance Committee attachments. So if y'all can pull that up, because that's basically what we approved. And it is.
The name of that?
Sample of project cost.
Sample of project cost. And it starts with River Lights.
We have it on our agenda today.
Okay, good. And we made one amendment to that. We added $20 million that was on the original list to do other capital improvements, including HVAC units for all schools over the 10-year period. And so, and he's now given it to us in print. And a couple stipulations, it's the Mary C. Williams Replacement School at River Lights. Discarding the Mary C. property after River Lights is built and becomes Mary C. And it's not quote a new school per se, but it's a replacement school that was on that list. And so what he's handing out now. Yeah, and if you looked at dollar amounts on the projects as recently as Monday of this week, these are the new updated numbers, they went up. So that replaces all the numbers we've had in the past. That's hot off the press from Dr. Morgan, those numbers, which are incorporated in this list that's online as the sample of project costs. So final total of the bond ask as this recommendation from our committee is $320,521,418, which is within the capacity of what the county can do. And if you were listening, Mr. Credle said that it was, I took a couple of notes on what he said. He said it was basically feasible. And it was, it was within, they would have to do some little tweaking of their language because it would take us over the per capita for a couple of years. But that was really doable. They could suspend that for a couple of years and we'd be fine. So that's where we are. And now it's up to this board to make a recommendation of its several members to the county of what we want to do. So with that, Madam Chair, I yield it back.
Gracious. Mr. Wildebohr and then Ms. Barnhart.
I just wanted to, just one addition, we had talked about it as a committee. There was a request from the, from the county to prioritize the order of these, if we choose to accept all these as our list. But they did. And I said, well, why don't we not do it?
This list, or this list?
But I said, why don't we not do that?
The list online, no, uh-uh. The sample of project cost.
Why not? The board's going to, you know, the board's going to.
We don't have that in print anyway.
I'm sorry, guys. I'm trying to hear.
It's on the screen.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to hear Mr. Wildebohr.
So basically what we were asked, what they asked, the county folks asked us to prioritize in case it gets to them and they say, well, we can do, we can't do $320 million. We can only do 100, you know, whatever, $200 million. They was ask us to prioritize. We were talking about doing it as a committee, but it made more sense for us as, you know, to do it because we have the final say anyway.
Ms. Barnhart?
I just want a clarity of what you said at the beginning. Madam Chair, so the goal of this workshop is we're going to vote on this in our October meeting in a couple of weeks from now? So that goes, okay, thank you so much for that, Perry.
Dr. Merrick?
Yeah. As a full board, I still have not been told how we got to this list from this list.
That's what we're doing today.
That's what you're going to be presenting today.
One of the things that we're talking about today.
Thank you so very much.
Yeah. All right.
Madam Chair, just to clarify, I think the plan of the workshop is to bring the board members who are not on the committee up to speed to where we, we, the others that are, where we are now. So you can consider that recommendation.
Thank you.
And then determine where we want.
I'm passing out copies of the Finance Committee packet.
Oh, that'll be helpful, yeah.
So is there anyone else that doesn't have the Finance Committee packet?
And then save that for maybe Mr. Perry.
Okay.
And then we also have, well, no, it doesn't matter today.
Ms. Justice, did you have a question?
I'm a little confused about, sorry, I'm a little confused about what the purpose of the meeting is because I just heard something differently. I thought we were going to go ahead and decide on the priorities. He said that the vote would be.
So what we're doing is we're getting all of the information. So over the past while, that committee has been acquiring all of the information about the buildings and about the different needs across the district. They prioritized. They brought forward their recommendation. Today is all about us asking and answering every question that we could possibly have so that in a couple of weeks, when we do have our regular meeting, we can then make a decision on priorities and if we are going to move forward with the recommendations based off of the committee.
So mainly information.
This is information. We have all the people here who know all the things. All the things. And so hopefully we can, we can get as many answers as possible and then we'll get community feedback as well. So that we can, because this is, since this is a discussion about a bond, the community needs to give us their feedback about whether this is, these are good ideas or not. So, Dr. Merrick?
100%. We need the community input and feedback. This is an interesting book I just was given. And so, and then I hear you say that you want me today to ask all the questions. I'm like, I'm not that fast a reader. So I hope you'll give us a little bit more time.
Absolutely. There's more information coming. So next up is a presentation of the school facilities. Who is going to do that? And you wanted to say something, didn't you?
I'll jump into what we're about to talk about.
Do it, do it.
So as we have, I wanted to wait until the 10th day had occurred for enrollment to stabilize enough to do basically a capacity study. Not a capacity study, but sort of a capacity look at where our schools are. Now, there's a couple, somehow I uploaded the wrong one, so just be that as it may. Alderman should be highlighted in purple and Castle Hanes should be highlighted in yellow. Can you go to this one for me, please? Thank you. So ironically, I was actually fairly pleased with what I'm seeing when I did the actual rundown of where we are size-wise, all those things. We only have four of our schools that I would consider seriously under capacity, which is under 70% full. Typically, you're going to want to run, you don't want every school at 100%, folks, okay? Because then you've got nowhere for kids to go. Somewhere between 80 and 90% is really optimal. Interestingly, as you can see, our middle school numbers are almost 90% full at capacity. And our high schools are even higher than that at 97%. Now, there's a couple of variables to think about. One is, yes, our enrollment continues, our enrollment has not stabilized from where it was pre-COVID. We have slipped from 26,000 six or seven years ago down, down, down a little bit to about 24. Some of that, I think there are variables in that we need to consider. The cost of living is one. Opportunity scholarships, things like that, the explosion of charter schools, that is another. There is also a birth rate challenge that I think we need to be considering as well. That for the first time, the United States has come under its replacement population number, okay? So I think that is this bubble, a high school bubble that's going to then bubble out or not. But then you also have children who return for our high school experience, so that number you have to consider. So I think what you're going to see when you look at this more closely is this is a geographic issue primarily. All the places that you see that are under capacity are all centralized here in the middle of town. Porter's Neck, Anderson, Hershey, things like that. Those things are, the pockets, we have a pocket situation going on. So it's not going to be a simple fix where you can, because the public may look at this and say, well, jeez, if Porter's Neck's at 117%, just take 300 of them and put them at Snipes. That doesn't work. Obviously, logistically, that's an issue. For our community, that would be an issue. So some of these projects that you see, that you'll see in a minute, aren't necessarily to say this will fix our capacity issue, but it'll give us the capacity to fix the issue, if that makes sense, right? So then this isn't going to be, this is the start of a decade-long conversation about things like consolidation, about things like making sure we're being as effective as we can with the buildings that we have. But it's also about replacing outmoded, outdated and unsafe buildings with safer, secure buildings for kids, right? So I just wanted you to make sure you had a copy of this. This is up to date today, or at the 10th day. So I thought it was relevant information and I was pleased to see that we aren't as under in capacity as I had thought we would be. You also have to look at this is a capacity with mobile units. Those are not with the potential of mobiles, but just with the mobiles that are already there. And I have one more point, but I'm going to let you, I'm sorry, can I let her say it? Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, go for it.
I just want to make sure board members that were not in the Finance Committee meeting, the packet I gave you, the documents that we're referring to in this meeting are all in this packet I gave you. So we're going to go through that entire Finance Committee packet. So if you flip through, and I do apologize, there are not page numbers in the packet, I apologize for that. But if you flip through, maybe it's around page 20 or so, you'll see that same chart we were just talking through. So if you want to make notes in the packet, it will be there, so if you. Turn around. It's saying they're both.
It's both, into both places, yeah.
But this one, this one is not the updated, mention this to update.
This is the one that I emailed you this week. Unfortunately, this is not the one I emailed you. I made a couple of additions to it after I uploaded it. So the one that I emailed you is the most up-to-date one. Yes, correct. The only other thing I wanted to make sure is clear, I'm the one that I sent you by email, I'm sorry about that, is there is a capacity number listed for our preschool centers that I want to make sure I make clear. So if you look down there, you see that two of our preschools are over capacity. And that is not the right, sorry, I uploaded the wrong one. So that's not the one I'm looking at. I'm talking about the one I emailed you. I want to make sure you see that when you look down at Johnson Pre-K, just for an example. Johnson Pre-K says that they're already over capacity. I want to be clear that that is based on the number of pre-K compatible rooms that are in that building, meaning they have an exterior door, they have a sink, they have a bathroom. So the actual footprint of Johnson is the same as the footprint at Bradley Creek. It's the same building. But that number is housed to be pre-K specific, if that makes sense. So I didn't want you to think that, boy, they're overcrowded. They have space, but they don't have pre-K compatible space as it sits right now. So that's the things I wanted to explain. And I do apologize for this, but if you can just reference the one I emailed you, and I'm going to go print it out, so you have a new copy.
And Dr. Barnes, did you correct on there, because I'm not sure which copy you were, the Howe pre-K acreage? Because I'm still looking at the one that says 5.5 and it's 15, isn't it?
I'll ask Rob that question when he gets done.
Howe pre-K real estate was how many acres? This is, this is incorrect. It says five acres and it's, it's not five acres, I don't think.
No, 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 it's definitely not. You mean in total?
Yeah, Howe pre-K. What's the acreage?
Oh, Howe, I'm sorry. I thought you said pre-K numbers. Howe pre-K. No, the acreage for Howe is five and a half.
That's all it is?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Barnhart?
Dr. Barnes, would you mind answering my question? What is that optimization number for our elementary schools to be operating so that we're not sharing resources part-time? What is that ideal number for us here in New Hanover County?
Everybody buckle up. This is going to take a minute. The state has a number that it staffs your schools at for certain specific things like AP counselor, media coordinator, enrichment, things like that. If you want to go with the state's number, that is different than the number we use here because we live in the real world, okay? If you wanted to go to the state's optimization plan, you would need 1,000 kids in every building to afford one assistant principal, which means by the state standard, none of our middle schools and none of our elementary schools would even warrant a full-time AP on their own. If you wanted them, yes, ma'am.
And that's going up from 750 a couple years here?
It was, it's been a while, yeah, but there used to be a lower number. It's now 98.53 kids gets you one month. Right, right. We all know that's a crazy number. For if you want to have each school have a counselor, social worker, media coordinator, you need to have 1,200 students in a building for the state to fund all of those. And then you have to look at enrichments. Enrichments is a little different. Enrichment, enrichments are about 575 kids to actually pay for all three art, music, PE, full-time at a building. So we, as a district, have given you guys as well each year sort of an allotment formula that we use here at the ground level. If you want your school, and that's why some of our smallest schools share an AP, share some enrichments because their numbers are really low. I think what Ms. Barnhart was asking is what's the tipping point by which you say they're going to get them all if we have it? It's about 500. Between 450 and 500, we usually say we're just going to give them. Now, social workers still share, but it does give a full-time counselor, full-time media coordinator, full-time enrichments for all three, and a full-time AP. So that number, optimization number, Ashley, would you say it's about 500?
I haven't looked at it recently, but last time we looked at it, it was around 500.
That's pretty close, yeah.
Ms. Justice?
And that's with local supplements making that possible, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because that wouldn't be doing if you're going by the state law.
Oh, no. If we were just going by the state allotment, we'd all be in buildings right now because they, they would need the help.
Ms. Bradford?
And just to comment, everything you just said is why we need those 42 positions, school specialists from Green Delta. That is the exact reason we do, because we're not going to get an AP for any elementary school. You're going to have to have 1,000 students to get one of those coordinated state funding. Other than that, we have to go into local money, get the local money from everything else. That's why it's so critical we get this funding from Green Delta.
All right.
That's what we will, we'll print these out.
Okay.
Cool.
So next up, let's look at the sample of projected project costs. And I think, Dr. Morgan, this is you that can talk a little bit more about all of these different things. And there is, and I'm guessing you're going to use this to kind of talk about the specifics of the, so if you can find the paper that looks like this. Okay, perfect. So I'm going to hand it to you then. You can take charge and go for it. Tell us what to do.
Point of information, I'm sorry, I don't know where you are. You said we get this, I got this. What's number five?
On the agenda. Yep, sorry, I'm sorry. That was my fault for causing confusion. My apologies.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Sorry, my mic wasn't on anyway, so I can start over. So at the last Finance, Capital, Bond, did I get that correctly? At that committee meeting, one of the members made a motion to focus on some of the specific projects, pulling them from the total list. So I'm going to jump back and forth for one second. The page that I handed everybody up front, that's the list that you have all seen for months, but it's now updated with current costs. So I believe it was requested at the last board meeting that you all have the opportunity to see that list in its entirety and it be updated. So I wanted to provide that. Number five, two, on the agenda, gives you that, gives you all of the costs that, I'm sorry, all of the projects that were not included in the sample project cost. So it gives a little more detail for those that the Finance Committee recommended we focus on. And then it gives the detail of those that are included on this entire list, but were not recommended by the committee. Does that make sense? Okay. So in the list that you see under the sample project costs, we've got essentially, the packet of information just focuses on the projects, but the list actually includes the projects of River Lights Elementary, New Hanover High School Phase One, Pine Valley Elementary School, Trask Middle, and that is referring to building a new building on the site of Sea Tech. And Trask Middle, as it is now, would remain in place and would be used by Laney High School in some capacity. Porter's Neck Elementary School addition, and specifically that's an addition, the proposal is an addition for eight classrooms. And then the items that are not project-specific, that's district-wide technology improvements, district-wide safety improvements. And then the other, the other two items are program management and contingency fees that are built in.
Does the safety improvements, does that include the metal detectors that we deferred?
No, sir. This is, this is a totally separate recommendation. The idea being that every year, there would be a million dollars allocated for safety upgrades and separately for technology upgrades. And so I think the, the goal would be that at some point during the time of that, as those funds are dispersed, all schools in the county would benefit in one way or another at some point. So as mentioned, in one of the items that is included, and that is where I hesitated because I couldn't really see what Ms. Mason was holding up. But the first, the first packet that is included as an attachment under number five is just more details about the sample of project costs that's listed on the front page of number five. If you were to go, and the master plan for New Hanover High School is simply, we have included that just because, you probably haven't committed all that to memory. So if you want to pull it up, you're welcome. It's the same presentation you all saw at the June or July board meeting, but it's there for reference. And then the summary of project cost, part two, as I mentioned, that is where it looks very much the same on the front, but it is a more detailed description of the, of the projects that were not included in the Finance Committee's recommendation. And then the only other thing I added was the Isaac Baer Advanced Planning Report. To be honest, that, that didn't make it to the discussion table today, but when we were planning, when I was planning to upload things, that had been a conversation topic for the Finance Committee. And so I wanted to include it just again, like the master plan as a reference so that you can look at it.
So looking through, is everybody on the same? Getting there. We're catching up.
And I apologize, I'm realizing now I probably could have organized this a little better, but when I did it at the time, it made perfect sense. Okay, so you want me, so you want me to start over? Okay. Sure. All right. So I'm going to look at the one that is the sample, the sample of project costs. And at the top, it lists the purpose of those projects. So this identifies River Lights Elementary School as a new school to be built. New Hanover High School Phase One, Pine Valley Elementary, a replacement school on the same site as the current Pine Valley. Trask Middle, again, being a new building on the Sea Tech campus. And Porter's Neck Elementary addition for eight classrooms. So I've tried to provide just a little bit more detail. For example, the River Lights would be, the proposal is a new 650-student elementary school to be built in that River Lights development. That's a 15-acre lot. We, we do not own that lot, however, that lot is to be conveyed to us once funding has been confirmed. New Hanover Phase One.
Yep, Ms. Bradford?
On that River Lights, Mary C. Williams, River Lights, the capacity right now, the maximum capacity is 431. The capacity at 360, take off a certain number of data. So the new River Lights will be 650, so the new River Lights are increasing our capacity. It is going to then rotate some students around that area into that school, so it's not split at school size.
It could take some from Bellamy and it would take off some of the capacity.
Can I make one statement, two, well, two statements? One, I know that in 2014, when this first got floated, this conversation was there in the last bond, it was also the plan to rebuild Mary C. Williams as well. I will tell you, over the last decade, I, one of the recommendations I will try to convey to the board is I think we have to continue to look very carefully at our overhead costs, which are the number of buildings that we maintain. I do not think the enrollment has the capacity for both. I do not think the enrollment has the capacity for both Mary C. Williams and River Lights, so I think that what you would do is you would basically create Mary Williams at that school, not rebuild, not both, if that makes sense. The other factor to think about, I did talk with Mr. Kudre this morning, and I'm gonna try to say this correctly. He said that the school system and the county commissioners took steps in 2017 to secure the land at River Lights, that in his estimation, that there is not a clock running on when we have to build there. He said he feels, and he said that our attorney can reach out to their attorney, but he said he is confident to say that the school system has the onus of responsibility for that land. We may not own it, but we don't, it is dedicated to that function.
And I can clarify, I had a conversation with him yesterday morning, and he said, for all intents and purposes, we do own it, we have the right to, so that we shouldn't worry about that aspect of this plan. But finding out what the lawyers do is, but based on what, is transpired, that's where we are.
Mr. Conkey, can you confirm that? Because I've heard all kinds of rumors for years, because we haven't built yet, and the expectation is a lot, you know, previously. And, yeah, could you confirm how much right we have to that land? Because, as I said, yeah, thank you.
But, and I asked him like twice. I said, can you say that again? So, I make sure I say it right. So, he says that in 2018, that the county commissioners and the school board voted collaboratively to designate that space.
But, River Lights owns it, right?
So, as it stands right now, I think there were plans to move forward with building, breaking ground several years ago. And they had, there was a conveyance agreement in place that was being edited, and then we got to a point where the school system was not in a position to move forward with the funding, and so those conversations halted. I have reached out to the representative for River Lights, we're having a conversation on Monday, actually. So, because what I was hoping to get is an updated agreement, I wanted to get an update of that conveyance agreement, because the most recent one I have is several years old, and my understanding is there were some edits being made, but it wasn't necessarily just to the conveyance of the property so much as the declarations of, you know, kinda like any HOA, they have these covenants. And some of the covenants simply didn't apply to a school that was gonna be built there, and so they were editing those things as well. So, those conversations are still happening, I mean, they're, we're re-engaging. How about that?
Ms. Justice?
Yeah, I'm just being very practical, real world. I would, you know, I'd like to know that we would have that down in writing to protect us, only because I've seen way too much, because this is politically involved, I mean, the whole school board and district is. Anything can happen, and we could lose it, and we can't do anything about it, so we've just gotta protect ourselves. I want us to have it, but I would like to make sure we do have it.
That's what we will do, right?
That's what I'm trying to find out.
That's the question.
There'd be a lot of egg on our face if we made all these plans.
Yes.
If we show up there, there's already something there.
That would really be bad.
He had a manager, I contacted and had a conversation with the county manager yesterday on that topic, to clear my mind that that question was answered, and he said, yes. So, he can ask anything, say anything, probably, or you can only buy a disclosure, and I watched this whole time.
I think, I think what people are asking for, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is just the documentation, just so that it's, because, yes, I'm glad that he said that, but just to have that as just an extra, this is, this is actual.
Facts.
Yeah. And I asked Ford in writing as well, and he asked our attorney to call theirs.
Okay.
And I've also been in touch with their attorney. So, I just wanna let you know that I predicted this question well in advance.
Good job, Dr. Morgan.
Good job.
Good job. Good job.
Yeah, we need to know for sure.
No, we do.
All right, so the next one?
The next one, so, for New Hanover High School Phase One, Phase One is part of the four, the four-step hybrid recommendation that they made. Phase One essentially would, it would move the cafeteria, it would, let me back up, it's gonna secure the perimeter around the campus on both sides of Market. They would build a new cafeteria, and in that cafeteria building, that building would be a three-story building that would be a brand-new building. It would house classrooms, they would move the auto shop from where it's currently located, they would have a secure courtyard, we'd secure the vestibule in part. And so, I say that because in Phase Three of that proposal, they do a couple of additional construction, they do a couple additional additions to the catwalk to make it more secure and connect to the buildings. In Phase One, the recommendation is for the schools to get ownership of that catwalk so that we can then block off the entrance, the entrances, so that it's not as accessible from the ground level. And then, it would also move the bus drop-off, which is currently located on the north side on Princess Street. It would move it to the south side behind this new building and connect it to the parking lot behind the tennis courts.
So, that's South West Market Street, that's where you'd be?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
Didn't, I've been vocal that I'm in favor of the hybrid plan, and so that is what, in the phases, looking at this, got allocated as part of the recommendation, but I didn't know if we needed to officially vote as a board if we were in favor of the renovation of New Hanover versus the hybrid plan versus the new build. We were presented those three options. Did we ever officially have a vote on those? I just didn't recall that, and so, I just, for clarity, and as we're discussing this, I didn't know if we needed to do that officially before, but that's what, that's what is in the consideration here today, so I just wanted to be very clear with that. This is part of the hybrid model being included in the bond, which is basically dedicating us to that model as far as planning purposes, so I didn't know if that.
My understanding was so it was presented to us, and then we're gonna have to figure out how we wanted to function with that. I don't know.
I just wanted to make everyone aware, my colleagues, that that's what it is.
It's a good point. Do you have a comment about that?
Well, not exactly about that. I wanted to let those that were not at the previous meeting, it was a big discussion, to be honest, about exactly what we're talking about, about Phase One, Phase Two. There were several folks that really wanted to have Phase Two be part of the bond. The discussion there was that it would actually push us over the debt limit, but I'll be honest, I was the one brought up, I think we really need to, as a force, I mean, the Board of Education and the county commissioners, hand in hand, go to the endowment together and say, this is a pillar we need to done, you know, and not, you know, well, can we, you know, this kinda thing, and I think that was overall well-received. So, I think that maybe, you know, we could do Phase One through the bond, we could do Phase Two almost simultaneously or shortly thereafter, we have to be shortly thereafter, to be honest, but once the endowment, if we can get the endowment, when, I'm gonna say if, there's no if, when we get the endowment to be part of that, you know, to come to agreement to do that, you know, just to let you know that.
Can I?
Um.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to offer one piece of information, too.
Sure thing.
That I didn't do. One other thing to consider, just for the Phase One, as we talk about Phase One and Phase Two, one of the things that we have talked about, but I wanna make sure everybody's on the same page, that if we move, if we were to decide to move forward with Phase One, that is in place and allows the students to remain in school while that is happening. One of the conversa, part of the conversation that came about Phase Two, and there's been some discussion about mixing, matching, I think it's important to note that with Phase Two, it's really focusing on renovating the buildings, the rooms, and the main building, and there's nowhere to take those students while that work's being done if we don't have the new building from Phase One. So, I just wanna throw that out there as information for all.
Ms. Bradford?
And for clarity, the committee voted, not today, but last minute, to discard under the consideration of the new renovation, except for the hybrid. We took off the place for the committee, the find a piece of land, buy a piece of land, build a $230 million school. We took that off the consideration for the committee, and we took off just doing a $137 million renovation. And you'll notice that it's only Phase One, and what our motion to this body is, is to do $60 million worth, and then go looking for Phase Two and some other.
Sorry.
Say it again.
Okay. At the committee level, a month ago, not today, we voted to take the $137 million just renovation only to New Hanover High School off the table, and we voted to take off the, find a new piece of land somewhere in the county, buy the land, and build a whole new school to replace New Hanover, and then abandon the New Hanover as a facility. And then, we were focused totally on the hybrid. Now, today, we've got hybrid down to the first stage of it, as Dr. Morgan has just, I identified, and then, as Mr. Wildevores said, we'd go looking for project, the second stage, we wanna do it, but under this bond, we can't put all of our money in one school, or it will never succeed. So, we're not abandoning Phase Two, Three, and Four, but we're looking at Phase Two as to coming from some other funding source in some way, as a committee. Now, it's up to this body to decide.
Ms. Justice, you had your hand up a while ago.
I believe that my question's been answered. I'm listening intently.
I know. Dr. Merrick?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm a stickler for procedure and governance, and I, I hear that the finance committee made a decision, and now, we are not able to make a decision outside of a decision that the finance committee made that we didn't make, that the board didn't make.
Not at all.
Okay, so what we're talking about right now is a recommendation for Phase, for the second, you know, for the hybrid model.
Right.
That the board has not, to my colleague's point, has not voted on.
I agree.
And they voted, is there a clarification? We could, is it especially, I don't understand, especially.
Yeah, I don't think we can either.
And then, I would say that I will render a motion at our agenda review that we take on that vote, so you have between now and next week.
We can, we can, I mean, we have not developed. We also haven't developed the agenda, so Dr. Barnes and I can add that.
Right, you have another day before we have to put it on, so we're good. We're good with that. That, that works for me. It's not that I disagree.
No, I agree.
I like the hybrid plan. I just wanna do it correctly.
Yeah, no, I agree. I agree. So, just a little side note, I don't know if you have been able to look at all through this packet, but we started talking about River Lights, and if you go to that next page in the papers, you can see the plan, which I thought was really cool to actually, like, to see what they're, what they're wanting to do, the floor plan and the site plan, the conceptual site plan. So, just, you know, to have to look at, but I thought that was, that was something to note. And I believe it's also, I think there's, also the New Hanover is in there, Pine Valley, all of them are in there, so it's really cool to kind of see all that. But, Dr. Morgan?
No, that's great, because I was actually hoping to, I didn't, I didn't point that out, but, yes, so, moving on, moving on, Pine Valley is the next item listed on their hand, the same thing applies there, except for site plan is listed in there, we'll look at the first and second floor. Sorry, my mic's on now. The proposal for Pine Valley is to build that on-site. The school for Pine Valley would continue to operate while it's being built, that, that particular piece of land is large enough that we could do that, we could keep kids safe while it's happening. And then, once the new school is built, we would demo the previous one and make use of that land accordingly. So, similar to River Lights, that would be, the goal would be for that to be built to a capacity for 650 students. One thing I think is probably worth pointing out as well with the new elementary schools that we didn't talk about is the idea that we would, I think we would like, and Dr. Barnes, correct me if I'm misspeaking, but we would like all new elementary schools to be built with an idea that pre-K can, can have classes in there as well. So, I just wanted to throw that out there because that's, those are the only two elementary schools that we'd be building from scratch if we move forward with this proposal.
Dr. Merrick?
So, I'm noticing that Pine Valley now has 413, and we're looking at building 650, and that we're looking at maybe there's a slight decrease every year, so obviously, that's gonna be taking on, you know, from other schools, and as part of that, part of the consolidation concept that we're going to, eventually, one school is gonna disappear.
I think once you knock over enough dominos, you're gonna land on a place that we may say, okay, what else could we do with this building and repurpose it? There are also other opportunities, kind of as we go forward, but this is really about, there's, there's no place that Pine Valley could go where we could just say, we don't need a Pine Valley. But, if we can replace a Pine Valley with a safe building, I think as you go forward throughout the years, we also have to think about the fact that does new buildings increase enrollment as well? So, I think as you go forward over the next several years, you'd be able to say, okay, where can we find consolidation, where can we find movement? But, building schools like this with a little bit higher capacity, with a little bit of pre-K compatibility, things like that, what you're really doing is you're building agility in the school system so we can pivot better and have more choices later on. I think, does that make sense?
No, it does totally make sense. I guess, you know, when we look at HVAC units, we look at life, like, what's the lifetime of this? And I don't think we can quite do the same thing to our schools, but we, but we do know that some of our schools are more outdated than others. I wonder if there's any way to put that information in a chart like this so we kinda can start to see, oh, yeah, that one's gonna be likely, you know, if we were going to phase something out, this one would be the one, you know?
Dr. Morgan, if I sent that back to you, could you add in the age of each of the building?
Yes, I have that.
Oh, look, he has.
Wow.
He's just saying combine them. He's saying combine them into one.
And are they in, is that in the packet? This is not in the packet. This is my own personal cheat sheet, for any time I'm in a conversation with anybody.
Is it written on the back of your hand, too, for anyone to go over and test?
Because I've seen it. You gave it to us in the last three months.
I may have, I may have, but this, this particular reference has the year that they built the acreage square footage and the last year of renovation. So, for example, so for example, like Pine Valley was built originally in 1969, the last year of renovation was 2001. So, I do think that's relevant. And I'm happy to share that.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
About Williams, since we were talking about? Could you guys see here about Williams?
Yes, I can. Williams was built in 76, and last renovations were 99.
That's a really relevant point, especially when you think of, in two years, are we gonna ask for upgrades or modernization to a building, or like a project to do repairs? Well, maybe we need to think about where that building's gonna be in a decade.
Ms. Barnhart, and then I'll come.
Well, I would share to my colleague's suggestion, too, some of these other projects that didn't meet the committee's recommendation. There are renovations and additions to some of these other elementary schools, and so, while knowing the optimization realm is 500 ideally, if there's a possibility to do some of these lower, lower projects and hit multiple of our buildings to say, let's renovate and add-on to and get that capacity, maybe these aren't the top projects for the, like, the will of this board, and that, that becomes a discussion, is it better to build new or repurpose? I mean, and that's just a matter of opinion. I think it comes to the same result, though, of just saying, we're gonna have to have conversations, too, of, the overhead is important because operating at every building is costing us money, and the potential of saying recouping some of that and having less buildings to operate, that could increase that buffer in our operational expense and allow us more staff to be pulled in to support our students, which is a very important conversation for us to have. So, I don't, I don't necessarily know if there's two or three projects on this lesser, I'm trying to see of all the handouts we got today, which is the, which is, which I'm trying to refer to so everyone's on the same page of where, looking at that list of.
It's the, it's number two, summary of project costs.
Page number 800.
Part two. Part two, summary of project costs.
Like, this full one, this is that full list of looking at, what I circled was what the recommendation of the committee was, but if there was a possibility to say, were some of these other projects, is it the will of this body, not today, obviously, but are some of these other projects combined and replaced one of the elementary? some of these other projects combined and replaced one of the elementary schools, is it more beneficial for us to do that? I don't know the full answer to that question. I think it's a matter of discussion and opinion, but I, I think that's kind of what I heard you kind of getting at, to say, is it better to kind of hit a few of our facilities versus one bigger facility? I don't know.
If, if I could offer just one thought along those lines, I think it also will depend on which schools you look at for that. For example, because at one point, the discussion, before my time, the discussion had been to do something different with Williams, where it would be renovated, and then it would be used in sort of this multi-purpose fashion from the school system. I think part of the, part of the issue that I think we need to be aware of with Williams in particular is to do the work that needs to be done to Williams to re, to renovate it the way it was previously suggested, is still going to, it's probably going to be in the neighborhood of thirty-five, forty million dollars. And so, to me, then, the question would become, well, is it worth us to do that and move forward with the plan that we had a few years ago, or would it be better to build the River Lights and know that we might be able to still use that for, for any number of reasons without having to renovate as much? Not all schools are going to be in that, in that shape, though, right? So, if you're looking at making an addition to some of the other schools, like.
Pine Valley or something, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. So, like Porter's Neck is on here, but.
Yeah.
I think the last addition, Dr. Barnes and I were talking, the last addition that was done to a school with the twenty-fourteen bond.
Was it some type?
No, it was Wrightsville Beach.
Oh, yeah, that's just recently.
That was, that was recent. They had nine mobile units. They had more classrooms outside than they did inside. But because of the, because of where it's located, I think the town of Wrightsville would no longer grant them special use permits to add more mobiles. And they couldn't increase the footprint because of where it's located, so they had to go up, and so they added a second floor for the first time. So, anyway, I say that because in twenty-fourteen bond, there were additions to other schools, but they were more community spaces, like, the, the high schools got gyms and cafeterias and libraries. That was the only, that got, you know, additions. And then there were some that were brand-new, like Blair was rebuilt, and College Park was rebuilt. And so, just thought I'd share that, it was interesting to me.
Dr. Barnes, and then I'll come over here.
Everyone needs to turn towards Crystal and give a brief nod. So, in, an email, in accordance with the development agreement, the county and the school board must notify Newland community, communities that an elementary school located within River Lights is needed to adequately serve the needs of the community. We will prepare a resolution for consideration by the school board and county commissioners at an upcoming meeting. This will initiate further discussions. So, that was in two thousand and seventeen, and then, again, in November of two thousand and seventeen, have an email saying the county commissioners unanimously approved a resolution related to a future school site on River Lights property. So, we will look for that agreement, but it looks like there was that, one that was done. Yes.
Thank you, Chris.
But, uh, I know, right? So, it looks like there, there's something that works, we just have to lay our hands on the hawthorn bobby.
And just to be clear, we, we definitely have that. The only thing I don't have is that conveyance agreement. So.
Yeah.
I can find that and get that to you.
But, that's a, those are positive steps, for sure.
I know all three of you, so I'm, I think Judy was first, and then we'll go Ms. Bradford, and then Dr. Merrick.
Okay, I was wanting to be here during the process, I think it was two thousand and nineteen, when we turned with Architects, we were going to do a lot of things then, and didn't have the chance. And the main, one of the main things that came up was the reason that Pine Valley and Williams needed to be redone was literally because they were so darn unsafe. They were developed during a different time in education philosophy, were open schools, and so we have doors, it's almost like many New Hanover High Schools. And so, you can't really remodel them, you really need to rebuild a school that's safe. So, and that's the reason they've got the priority there, is because no matter what way we look at it, it's, they're still wide open, and they're going to be that way until something happens.
Ms. Bradford?
And what I would say, Dr. Morgan, is this sample of project costs, if you could take that and then add to it for us, the age of these schools, just put it right on there, and then the capacity numbers, because I've done that in my handwriting here, but I can't distribute that to everybody. But, for example, under River Lights, it would say, Mary C. Williams at River Lights. Mary C. was built in seventy-six, it was renovated in ninety-nine, the maximum capacity's four thirty-one, it's currently at three sixty. So, this school increases capacity. I think that helps us make up our minds to see it all on one sheet. If you could just, because you've got the information, but just combine it into the one sheet for all of those, and any other that the board wants to consider that's not in this top five.
Dr. Merrick?
What you guys have been doing is a lot of work. I want to commend you for what you're doing. So, what I'm about to say now, I don't want it to sound like I'm ungrateful, but really good, long-range planning. If we are starting to envision the fact that we are going to consolidate, we should start with the end in mind. Which of our schools do we think we would, we might consolidate? So that we can start planning, and I know that funny word about changing the catchment area for these schools and where kids go from where they were. If we're going to consider consolidation, we should have that be part of the plan ASAP, so we know kind of what direction we're heading in.
Ms. Barnhart?
I think before we have that conversation, because when this gets put on the ballot to be voted on, is a list of ideas of projects, of this is where, we encapsulate this is justification of why, what we're going to do with it, make sure that every single school in New Hanover County schools is positively affected by this. But I think that this also kind of break, gives us some breathing room to say, let's see if our enrollment does continue to decline, because that changes the conversation. And I think, in my head, I, and I was vocal at the previous committee meeting, that this is not the numbered priorities, I would not have put them in that order because of the reason that I just gave. I would definitely personally be spacing out the elementary schools to do them a prioritization and funding of the order that matters separate, so that we're not building two elementary schools right at once, when we're seeing that is the biggest room that we have a, a buffer to be able to move with. So, I, I disagree only for that reason, is because if we start saying, and I, and I think it would be silly of us for, to start a plan to say, we're going to start moving all these kids around with, without knowing what projects are going to be completed. But, we can, if we're seeing continual trend, at some point, current enrollment, what is that number that says, it is just really, really hard to operate at a hundred fifty capacity? It's really, really hard to operate a hundred twenty-five capacity. And in order for kids to have constant access to quality resources, we, we want to get them to that five hundred capacity. Like, I, I feel like it's a little bit too before, but I hear what you're saying, that the conversation should happen, but I also don't want to create artificial angst about it.
And this is not a, this is not a hard and fast vote kind of thing, it's just a matter of envisioning, and it's probably even less for us and more for Dr. Morgan, and, you know what I'm saying? This is, this is planning. And I also have to admit that we don't want to make any kind of announcements or stuff like that before the bond is voted on, because someone's not going to be happy with it. Right? If, if we have to close a school, it's going to hurt people, people are going to be upset.
Ms. Bradford?
And Dr. Barnes answered that in our last meeting very well, and so I would ask him to do that. But if you look at this, you're going to have three new schools. If all they, when all things are done, you've got three new schools, and you've increased capacity, plus you've dealt with the capacity issue at Porter's Neck. So, that changes the whole outlook on the C-word or the R-word. And so, to me, at first, I thought we needed to deal with that, but then I think that we'd be putting that, the cart before the horse. We need to figure out what the bond amounts are, what it's going to go towards, and then see the effect of it. And is that essentially what you said, Dr. Barnes, earlier? Something like that?
I don't think so.
More eloquently?
I don't think so, that's Mark, but I think the, the question about consolidation comes after the question about building. So, I think that you are correct. I think that, you've heard me say for a year now, that the only three ways to put more staff into schools, get more funding, increase enrollment, consolidate our current overhead. Those are the three most likely ways. So, I think we would need these buildings to give us the flexibility to make good choices about closure, rather than the other way around, if that makes sense. But I think your point of, can we get a sense of what schools are the next oldest, which ones are the least safe, which ones are the most concerns, I think we can certainly do that. I really would caution us not to create a run at the bank, right? I don't want to needlessly worry staff and families, especially when we're talking about come back to school, you know, we want you to be in our school system, but be careful, we might close your building at any minute. I think, I think the.
Counterproductive.
The bond question would help answer some of those questions, is, I think, is the order in my head, at least.
Yeah, just thinking about it.
Dr. Morgan, did you have anything else you wanted to go over at all?
Not necessarily, and I'm happy to answer or try to answer.
You haven't gone through the rest of these?
That's true, I haven't. I'm happy to do that as well.
So, if you could, yes, that'd be great.
So, the Trask Middle School, if you will, if you go in, if you go into the presentation, you'll see, the only thing we've got for Trask is kind of a conceptual sketch of what it might look like on the C-Tech campus. One of the things to keep in mind is that, I guess it, it'll have to be referred to as something else, if there's another school there, but that Syd Berry Road complex is large. There's, it's seventy-nine acres. And so, if you look at the diagram that's been included, there's, you know, the idea being that Trask Middle School could be an entire middle school campus there that, that C-Tech shares with it. So, they have athletic fields built into it. You know, again, this is very high-level, but they've even, it looks like they've even got, you know, football stadium, track, I say stadium, but football field, track, baseball, softball field. But I think that's kind of, I think that's kind of interesting to look at, because, again, I don't, if you've not been out there, it's, it's, it's hard to imagine how big that particular campus is, and the potential it's got.
Mr. Wildebohr?
And I'm, I'm going to just remind everybody that it's not only going to affect Trask Middle School, which, you know, add capacity, it's going to help our high school, Laney High School, a hundred percent, which is huge.
Ms. Justice?
Yeah, I'm going to piggyback on that, because they've been talking about this for years. We went from Trask to a ninth-grade center, and that, again, we go with educational research, it's a really good model, to, as far as affecting the, you know, maximum learning environment.
Absolutely.
Yep.
I think it's going to help with traffic, I'm sorry.
Oh, I don't know, I couldn't write a book on that.
Like, we've been working, we've been trying to work with DOT for years to have a different traffic pattern. So, you're taking out, you're, all the same families are already going to Laney right now, right, ninth through twelfth grade. So, if you take out all of families that are currently going to Trask, that will help decongest that area big time.
They're doing a good job, though.
I, I agree, but I, it's, it is, it is, I think it would help that as well, and it'll increase the capacity. Trask is currently at seven oh seven, to increase the capacity to a thousand, and facilitate with that, so, yeah.
Dr. Merrick?
Yeah, I'm trying to put together, sorry, guys, I'm trying to put together capacity numbers. I noticed on the, the new one that, that Dr. Barnes just handed out here, the color-coded one, does not have New Hanover High School on it. Oh, no, it does, on the second page, I'm sorry.
It's on the second page.
So, the question I have is, with this phase one of construction, what, will it add capacity for students, or is it just a matter of reworking what we have?
Good question.
That's a good question. I, I don't know that off the top of my head, and I can dig into that report a little bit and see if that will help.
Thank you.
Because it's way under capacity.
It also, to me, it also kind of depends on how quickly the phase two comes behind it.
Yes.
Because if phase two comes right on the heels of phase one, capacity won't necessarily change, because they won't have access to the rooms they have access to right now.
Got it.
Does that make sense?
It does. And Porter's Neck, eight classrooms, how much capacity is that?
That is.
If you add eight classrooms, now, capacity isn't only a classroom, it's also the gym, the cafeteria, things like that. So, you can't, it won't be a one-for-one number, but I will find out exactly what that capacity, because capacity also takes in the square footage, the hallways, the, the communal spaces, so we'd have to get that exactly.
It's a ballot, it's a, I think it's roughly ten thousand square feet addition, but.
Oh, okay.
I know when you add, so, for example, right now, if you have a mobile unit, let's, just for round numbers, a mobile unit that's eight hundred square feet, to build one classroom offset, to offset that, you're going to tack on another twenty-five percent, roughly.
Right.
And so, it's not one-for-one, kind of like what Dr. Barnes is saying, but I, but I'll, we can, I can drill it out in the conference, I just don't know it off the top of my head.
Yeah, it'd be helpful to have, that's one of my questions, too. All right. Is there anything else related to Porter's Neck? Because you talked about Trask, unless you had more to say about Trask? Good?
Oh, no.
Okay, and then, anything else about Porter's Neck?
One thing about Porter's Neck that I learned yesterday is there's a corridor to nowhere to just pick up and build this new, eight, eight position. It's already stopped off or whatever, but if the corridor exists, do we have to build a connector to just blow through and go? It's set up in advance to do this, and that's kind of clear.
Great.
Does anybody have any other questions about all of it? It's a lot of information.
Yes, we do.
It's a lot of information. For me, the thing that, because I haven't yet.
No, no, go ahead.
The thing that, when I'm looking at this and trying to figure out priorities, the thing that helped me the most was visiting most of these schools, and seeing what is actually there, seeing what's going on at New Hanover, seeing what's going on at Pine Valley, seeing what's going on at Mary C. Just going to all of these different locations, and, and actually with your own eyes, beholding what we have in front of us. And it's going to be a self-determination, obviously, what your priorities are, and how you see the safety levels at different schools. For me, I know that I see Mary C. as a higher priority than I would say Pine Valley is, though Pine Valley is up there. I would say Mary C. is more, for me, personally. So, I think that going to visit is something that I'm going to recommend that everybody, if you haven't done it yet, go to visit these schools, so that you can see in actuality what is happening right now with all of our buildings. We have so many of them, and so many of them have needs, but if we're going to focus on these, let's look and see if these are the ones we really need to, based off of what we behold with our own eyes. And I think Mr. Wildebohr had his hand up.
Well, I was just going to say, I think we should all, as questions arise, you know, Dr. Morgan's, I'm sure, very, very available, just to you, sorry, very available, you know, on the phone call, hey, I got a question about this and this thing, before we make any final decisions. And two, I have just a clarification, I think somebody before said, well, next week when we meet, we don't meet next week, we meet the following, so it's one of your.
Oh, thank you.
Either that, or I'm going to miss another meeting.
Two weeks from now.
No, it's not next week.
Two weeks from now.
Ms. Bradford?
Piggyback off of what Chairman Mason just said, we brought this up at the last meeting an hour ago, and the principal, because I said, sign up with the principal for a tour, and he said, I think it would be very helpful if you say, come to my school and see Mary C., come and see Pine Valley, come and see New Hanover, but also, I need a recommendation from Dr. Barnes or Dr. Morgan, but also balance it against a more modern school, so you have that comparison. So, what schools would that be, you guys, that, that we would recommend to people? Go see Mary C. Williams and see Snipes, see what school?
Huntington.
Any of them, of course.
Just go ahead, visit New Hanover, and then watch High School Musical, and you'll get it. But, I mean, our newer buildings are things like Porter's Neck, College Park. So, I mean, those are some of our newer elementary, if you've seen those, the two newest, I would think, Ashley, what's our newest newest?
New school, Ashley?
Elementary schools, Porter's Neck is a good choice.
Blair.
Blair.
Blair's beautiful. Blair's beautiful.
Yeah, go see Blair and go see Mary C. Williams and go see Pine Valley, and you'll make up your mind right on the spot. You'll know how you're going to vote.
Dr. Merrick, did you have...
Oh, I've got questions, but that's what today's about. I shouldn't have to apologize today, right? With building a new Trask at C-Tech, is there any renovations necessary at Trask that would make it ready for high school kids?
Somebody else asked the exact same question in the last meeting, and that's a good one. No. The principal was here and confirmed that there were some renovations done there in recent years.
Oh, yeah, it was.
So essentially, the Trask as it exists right now would remain available for a different set of students to come right over.
Yep.
Fantastic.
Great.
And to answer the question, another one that came up in that was, is the cost to tear down Mary C. once it's vacant included in the estimate? And his answer was yes, in the River Lights estimate.
It is, yes.
Construction is not as expensive as I thought it's actually.
It's the teardown. Ms. Barnhart?
I don't disagree that those two elementary schools absolutely need to be, need to come down and a new structure. The question became is if this board wants to explore the, I know River Lights, Mary C., or whatever we wanted to call it, that would, and Pine Valley, a one-to-one trade-off, right? But the question would be, is if we did not want to do those two projects, and we wanted to say, let's renovate, you know, two or three others, and still, I agree, those two schools I just identified to say they are not safe to, you know, to knock them down, but that would be the question for this board. Is that something, do we want to do a one-to-one trade-off, or would we rather say, let's do one for sure new build and three renovation, expansion opportunities? And I am open to discussion for that, but I think that that is, that is part of our job to have the discussion, to say, what is our will?
Ms. Justice?
Absolutely. Number one priority for our kids is always going to be safety. And that was what was determined during the last cycle, when we thought we would be able to do these things. So that's why they're on the top of the list, and there's no way around it. We can't leave them open without major renovations that would be prohibitive cost-wise. So that's why they are on the top of the list and why we're talking about it now. So although I wish we could do that, that we didn't have to put those as priorities, and we could look at all these other school needs, I mean, that's just the reality. Safety is always, should always be first with our kids, and those schools are dangerous.
I agree, and I don't mean to be misinterpreted here. What I was saying is, I think those two, those two elementary schools need to be knocked down and re-built. But the question is, do we rebuild a new facility, or do we say, let's revamp and expand some of our current facilities and absorb that? That was my question for discussion. So I agree with you. I do not believe those two facilities are safe. I want to see an update, so that's the question that I would like to pose today, to have some honest dialogue about, because those are two very different conversations.
Dr. Merrick?
I've heard a lot of feedback from people in the community about, well, the disappointment that Isaac Bear fell out of top priority and moved down. And, you know, when I see what's going on, and I see the amazing production, I mean, what they're able to do for high school, I mean, Isaac Bear is phenomenal, and they're in a little trailer when they're, I mean, I know that sometimes they're at college.
I'm sorry, it's a learning cottage?
Learning cottage.
Learning cottage, that's what they call it.
Okay. We're going to call it a gingerbread house, if you'd like. We'll call it anything you like, but it's not up to snuff, and yet, you know, but I don't want to cast any aspersions, because what they do is phenomenal there.
Right.
But I guess I would want to know a little bit more of the thinking of the committee that had it drop out.
I can answer that.
Ms. Redford?
And we took a vote to take it out. We have a subcommittee, an ad hoc committee, that is studying other funding to that facility. We want to bring Isaac Bear up. It is a strong need in our school district. However, the fact that the land will not belong to us, and it's a combination of state-owned or, you know, university-owned land and a building that would belong to us, there is no appetite out there for that funding. So it's a self-defeating proposition right now to go forward on that, but not to find funding in some other form. And that committee's actually working on it, and Dr. Barnes has had lots of conversations, and he probably has more that I don't even know about, in terms of, how do we deal with Isaac Bear, bring it up to snuff, but have an innovative way to do that and fund whatever we're doing in a different way?
But don't we already have an agreement with the state, which is, you know, the university, for use of that land right now, right? We must have some sort of contract, right?
Use of and ownership of the land is, they're two entirely different things in terms of the mind of the voter.
Well, I just want to say that there are many different arrangements around purchases. You know, I mean, there are people out there who buy homes with a 100-year lease on them, right? And I don't want to buy a house that way, because I don't want to put someone in the position of having to sell it, but, you know, schools have a limited lifespan. That's why we're here today. That if we could get a 50-year lease on that land, then I don't think the public would have a problem with us building there. And I'm not trying to get the committee to rearrange all their thinking. I just, I've heard a lot from the community, and they deserve to have an answer that's, you know, suitable for them, that's all.
Ms. Justice?
Well, there was an original agreement back in 2004, whenever it was originally put together, that had to do with this state legislature also aiding and funding, and I'm not sure exactly what's going on there. So there's a lot of different wheels that have never been turned properly. Maybe somebody should put a committee together and do some investigation and some outreach. I'm just suggesting that.
We have a committee. They are working.
There is an ad hoc committee that is addressing the Isaac Bear.
Really?
As we speak.
What? Is it through Isaac Bear or something? Because I, this is the first...
It's under finance.
I did not support the removal of Isaac Bear off the bond. I'll be vocal about that. I think I was one of the only vocal ones in the committee to do that. It is a unique funding structure, because it's a collaboration.
Yeah.
It's our students, so it's a specialty high school, college, it's a weird situation in the logistics of the statute of how it is written, but I agree, it's a phenomenal school. It's an opportunity to double the capacity of the amount of students we serve and provide what is a kickbut education for what you can have as an opportunity as a high school student. So I'm a big fan of this and a big proponent of it, but, I mean, it's up to this board if we want to include it back. But it becomes, we would not be owners of the building because it's not on our land, then that becomes the legality side of it. And that's where the hiccup has been in the discussion. But I agree, I think it'd be great. If you start looking at comparing it to the capacity of things, this is where I think, does it behoove us or not? This just question I'll pose. $50 million to increase, what, by 200 capacity? It would double it from 200 roughly to 400 students in the high school arena. And so is that a cost benefit of something we want to embark on? That becomes the question, I think, open for discussion, that we should debate. There's a lot of logistics of, you know, having this cooperative high school is awesome for our students, and so I don't want it to go away, but it becomes the issue for this board to consider. Is that the best trade-off in the best interest of the district? $50 million for an increase of 200 high school, very specialized capacity? And I think that's the discussion. I value the program. I'm grateful for the opportunities that we give our students. We have phenomenal staff that work there, but when you're considering this list, I think that's something we have to consider, too.
Mr. Wildbore?
Well, as a former assistant principal at an early college high school, you know, I just think we have to make sure we are staying within all the guidelines, too. We have, okay. You know, we have to stay within all our guidelines. I don't know exactly, I don't remember what the guidelines are on maximum capacity for, we'd also have to work with UNCW on maximum capacity. I don't know if there are maximum capacities. I think there used to be, but there may not be.
I remember there was a minimum capacity, but I don't remember a maximum one, unless anyone else does. Well, 100 was the minimum. And of course, we have more than one early cooperative high school option as well. I think one of the other challenges is that Isaac Bear students use that building for only two years, not all four. And that is a complexity with that as well. Now, I have met with Chancellor Vellati twice. We sort of have three large topics that we continue to kind of cycle around, and that is Isaac Bear, DC Virgo, and Trask Coliseum. So we are making conversation about what the best options are. I am concerned about us bearing 100% of the cost for that building, though. And I think that's the part where I kind of get stuck.
Ms. Justice?
All right. The committee, under what purview is this committee? Is it involving, I'm sure it probably involves parents, but also board members and staff? I hate to say this, but first I have heard of this committee, and I'd like more information. There's some pretty powerful parents as far as abilities, and I know that they ask for help constantly. I'm not sure what our role is in that, and I would just like more information, because there's a lot of funding sources in a lot of different ways, but if you've got a committee, then they're working on it, and I don't know what they're working on. So I would like more information about that.
Are you talking about the ad hoc? For finance, Catherine Barnes? Yes.
I'm talking about Isaac Bear right now, if it's under the ad hoc funding.
Isaac Bear ad hoc committee, specifically just for that. Dr. Morgan's on it.
When was this put together, and why? Why don't I know about it?
Three months ago, four months ago?
I don't, you know, this is the kind of thing, we need, it's always a problem in life communication, but this is the absolute first I've heard about it.
Is not Commissioner Walker on it?
Am I allowed to speak?
Dr. Morgan?
So one thing that might help is when the board's work, when the ad hoc committee was formed, and I'm going to throw myself under the bus, because I've already talked to other board members about it, I was under the impression that we were trying to pull things together, see where we stand with Isaac Bear. What I found out quickly was, we've got everything ready to go, except money. So I talked to the board members on the finance committee and said, I'm not really sure what the next step would be. We've got plans, and this was based on Mr. Villains, the principal. He was like, Rob, I'll give you everything we got. We've got design. And so that was one reason I included that packet, the advanced planning packet, because that was something that I had not seen until I started, until I reached out and started having that conversation with people. If you look at that packet, you'll see exactly how far along they were. And you may already know, but it was news to me. And so for what it's worth, at that point, I think the conversation from my involvement, it became a conversation more about talking to people at UNCW to find out if they were on the same page. They're on the same page, we just need money.
But see, that's not what I'm referring to. I'm talking about, there's a committee with board members that's on it, or should be on it, and having this discussion, because even in 2019 and '20, I know that I was involved with Isaac Bear to a certain extent, and they had that information even then. I'm trying to understand just why, literally, I had no idea we had a committee that is working on this, that, I just would like to know what's going on with it and why. I did not know as a board member.
Um...
Where is it listed? I mean, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to...
So, in the interest of time, because I know, and I want to make sure you have your answers, I'm not trying to shut you down, I hope you know that, we have about seven minutes left. Would we be willing to add that to the agenda for discussion?
That's a good point. Good, good point. I'm second to that, if we need that, whatever.
Okay, I will write that down, so that we can have that discussion then. As far as next steps, what we're looking at is at our, as I said in the beginning, let's do some digging, look through those papers more, ask the questions that we need to ask, and at our next regular meeting, we will, this will be on the agenda for us to discuss and vote on our priorities, so that we can then take those to the commissioners. Yes, sir.
And I think if you guys...
Dr. Barnes?
Can we initiate the agenda review meeting? Do you want to vote on this?
Regularly.
No, thank you.
But we can, we will talk about it at agenda review, right? Because we're talking about the agenda.
We'll talk about the agenda, but the actual vote is at the regular meeting. Dr. Barnes?
The county gave the school system five different scenarios for funding levels, anywhere from 150 million to 500 million, correct?
I think it's like 137.
137, all the way up to 500. I think we need to recognize that this, at its core, is a good problem to have. $300 million is a significant amount of funding, even for the next five to seven years, whether it's 10 years. So I'm just really pleased that we're getting to have this sort of discourse and conversation, because the need, we've talked about the need for years, and their responsiveness, I thought a $300 million ask, because I had been called the county commissioner this morning, and I said, really? Because that seems like a lot, like, are you sure that? And he said, I feel confident, this is the right number, this is what our weekend support. And so I just want us walking out of here realizing that this is a good problem to have. Thank you.
All right. So with that being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yep.
That counts as five to zero, five to one, we are adjourned.
He always does, every single time.
He's missing the six and seven-hour meetings, that's what he's doing.
Never miss those. Good Lord almighty, I swear those people are crazy.